Mr. Hayes, are you ready? Good evening, everyone. It is 6:01 and we're going to call to order the September 7th, 2021 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin this meeting like we do each of our meetings with invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman John Alexander is going to offer the invocation and Vice Mayor Fennell will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand with me, please.
Through your heart with pray. Turn of grace God. Once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for all of our department heads. We thank you for the city of Gallatin. We pray of God for all those cities who go into devastation through wind, rainstorm. I just pray for Humphrey County and all those counties that are standing in need. And, Lord, please be in the midst of this meeting tonight and let everything we say, everything we do, be pleasanter in your sight. Bless Ms. Linda Love, who is not here tonight. Let her know that we're concerned, that we care. All thee blessed, we ask in your son Jesus' name, in every heart's have.
Amen.
Place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for us, please, this evening.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Van.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
And Councilwoman Love is absent, but Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. There are no minutes provided this evening, so we'll move along now to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can speak to any item that is on the evening's agenda. I will point out that there are three public hearings tonight. The first is on the Walnut Crest Town Homes. The second is on a rezoning from low-density residential to R-15 medium-density residential east of Airport Road and north of East Broadway. And then the third one is on the amended preliminary master development plan for Villas on the Greens, Phases 1 and 2. So if you would like to speak to one of those items, you may wish to do that under the public hearings. If not, you may come forward at this time. We ask that you introduce yourself, share your address, and you will have five minutes to speak. So public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
Evening, everybody. I came to speak about the development off of Walnut Crest Drive.
So give us your name and address, if you would, please.
John Letterman, 123 Walnut Crest Drive. They're putting in a sort of large development there that's going to affect the homeowners over there. There's a lot of renters that live over there. They're rental homes, and I don't think you'll be hearing from those people. But the way they have the plan set up now, they're routing all the traffic from this development onto Walnut Crest Drive. And that is a street that is what I call a cut-through street. People that are coming off of State Route 25 slash Red River Road come down through there to get on Long Hollow Pike. And they're pretty much speeders. It's a 20 mile per hour speed limit, but they like to go fast. They're cutting through. They're in a hurry. So the street, in my opinion, is overutilized as it is. There are no sidewalks on Walnut Crest Drive, but you'll see many children in yards and in the streets. So far this year, there have been five accidents, of which I am aware. One of those was attributed to a child in the road. And we're not talking about fender benders. We're talking about destruction of a brick mailbox and a telephone pole totally cut in half. Article in the Gallatin newspaper estimated 1,225 vehicles a day would be forced to travel Walnut Crest Drive, as that's the only access from the development. But yet, there's two other dead-end roads coming off of State Route 25 slash Red River Road, which run right into the back and could be utilized. That would help at least alleviate part of the traffic jam that's going to happen. Apparently, the development has already purchased a house, four houses up from the corner, which they hope to demolish and put a road in there with a stop sign. So you're going to have all the traffic coming down, and you're only going to have the distance of four houses to accommodate that, people turning out left and right. So we're hoping you haven't made a final decision, and we just want you to consider those. And if you can address any of them, I'd like to hear it. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Letterman. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? Seeing no one, I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed, and I will move to Mayor's comments. I do want to mention, for benefit of Mr. Letterman and anyone else who may be here about Walnut Crest, there is no discussion on that tonight by the council. This is just a public hearing night, and then Second Reading will happen at our next council meeting, just for your information. I do have several events to share with you all this evening, and the first of which is Mr. McCord is having a birthday tomorrow, so please wish him a happy birthday. This Thursday night, the night, is the Gallatin Artisan Crawl, happening at Inside Out Market, the TD Gallery, Every Era, Old and News, and Stone Harmony. That happens from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This Friday, Morningside of Gallatin is hosting their annual Heroes Snowballs and Sunday Bar. That's a fundraiser they do and an event honoring first responders. If you get a chance to stop by there, I'd encourage you to do so. This Friday and Saturday, no, maybe, yeah, Friday and Saturday is Market in the Park at Triple Creek Park Pavilion, Friday 4:08, Saturday 9 until 3:00. On Saturday, which is, as you all know, the 20th anniversary of 9/11, there are a lot of events taking place. First and foremost, our Gallatin Fire Department is hosting their annual ceremony. They didn't get to do it last year for the public. If you've never had the opportunity to attend, I would really encourage you to do so. It is always a phenomenal, a phenomenal and meaningful and really poignant event, and they do a beautiful job with it. That happens at 9:00 a.m. in front of Gallatin City Hall. Also happening on that day, St. Vincent de Paul is doing a walk and run at Triple Creek Park. There is the Unlimited Potential Community Field Day, happening at Chambers Street from 1:00 until 5:00. And then that evening is Grit, Grace, and Grub, happening at various locations around Gallatin. I'll go ahead and tell you that on the 16th, which is a week from Thursday, is the final third Thursday of the season, featuring Eric Blankenship and friends. And then the following Saturday is the Lions Club Journey for Sight Bike Ride, happening on the Downtown Square. Sorry, I'm timing myself. The Florida, I'm sorry, the Farm-to-Table Dinner, sponsored by the Gallatin Chambers, also on the Downtown Square that evening. And also that night is the Chotoma Club's Truck and Tractor Pool. So those are the events of the evening. I particularly appreciated Councilman Alexander's prayer this evening. We do want to remember to keep those who have suffered the horrible tragedies of late in our thoughts and in our prayers, particularly in our neighboring communities, because they've had a really rough go of it. Also, I want to mention, too, that we have a lot of people to be praying for and thinking about who are suffering in this latest wave of COVID. Not only are people suffering from illness, so many people have lost loved ones. And so I hope you will remember those people and take proper precautions to protect yourself and those around you. Migrating now to a much happier note, if you're watching on television, you can't see this, but if you're here, you may notice there are some Santa hats in the audience, and there's a reason for that. And I'm going to ask that bunch to meet me at the podium, because I have a proclamation to share.
Wants to sing Jingle Bells.
That is okay. That is okay. It's good to see all you. You all know that we do this each year, and this year, we are excited again to recognize Holiday Fest and all of the efforts that this group, I'd say particularly Ms. Evgen, put into making Holiday Fest in Sumner County happen and be especially fabulous each year. So I'll read this proclamation, and I'll welcome you to introduce everybody and say a few words. So this says, whereas the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, proclaims that the holiday season began in Gallatin on September 1, 2021, and whereas organizations in the city of Gallatin will host Tensels and Treasures, Appalachian dinners, the annual Christmas tree lighting, the Sparkle Noel Fashion Show and Tree Auction, the Christmas Harvest Craft Show, the Elves Holiday Workshop, Tuba Christmas Rees Across America, the St. Nicholas Ball, and the annual Christmas Parade, and whereas the city of Gallatin will hold Holiday Fest celebrations to conduct and enjoy the true spirit of the season, and whereas the city of Gallatin proclaims Holiday Fest annual events which honor community, creativity, literacy, charity, and tradition, and honors volunteers with an annual king and queen in royal court, now therefore, I, Page Brown, Mayor of the city of Gallatin, do hereby declare the 2021-2022 Holiday Fest season to be in effect until January 31, 2022, and encourage all citizens to participate in these special celebrations to establish holiday spirit and encourage giving. So, thank you. Linda, do you want to say a few words?
I want Larry Phillips as our president. Maybe he could say a few words.
All right.
You know more about the events than I do. Since you put them all on. Well, we're starting out with our first event is coming up this month, later this month.
Yes.
And Holiday Noel, is that what that one is?
No, we're going to honor the EMTs at a Champions of Valor breakfast. So you're all invited, and Trey Haggard and Johnny Garrett will be the speakers. So we will honor the EMTs of Sumner County, and two of them come from Gallatin, so that's exciting. And then right after that is what Larry's talking about, is the Sparkle Noel, which is a fashion show. And we have a local Sumner County young man who has started his own fashion industry, and now he does every pageant and everything in the world. His name is Jonathan Kane, and he does Miss USA and everybody. And so we're excited about that. And we're excited about all the things that are happening in Gallatin, and we can't thank Mayor Brown enough for all that she does. And these are a couple of our board members that have been with us, and Connie Maynard, and Jackie Loftus. And we have a board of 18 people, and they live in all different areas of Sumner County. And we're thankful to be here and thankful to honor the holiday season with all of you. Thank you.
That's it.
And they do a tremendous amount of work to make everybody's holidays merry and bright. Do you want a picture?
Left your picture, okay. One more, one more. Come on.
Oh, my gosh.
Old Santa just had knee surgery, so he doesn't move too fast.
Not right now.
The regular cameras are so small, though.
And that concludes the Mayor's comments. Moving now to the regular agenda. First item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance 02107-44, and for that, Councilwoman George is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning 31.1 plus or minus acre parcel from CS Commercial Services District to an MRO, multiple residential and office district with a preliminary master development plan for Walnut Crest Town Homes, located northeast of the intersection of Long Hollow Pike and SR 109, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. So move.
This is a public hearing. It's now open. If you'd like to speak with us, you may come forward at this time. Again, we ask that you introduce yourself and give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor Brown. Good evening, council. I wanted to speak about this townhouse development, because I am not very excited about the way that we're having so many townhouses and apartments being built in Gallatin. It seems as though we're becoming the city of apartments and townhomes. And we're not getting any variety in the developments that have been coming through to be approved. And you all know that I do pay attention to the planned Gallatin meetings and the surveys, and it seemed that the surveys were showing that people wanted more estate homes and more variety, which we're not really seeing happen. We're seeing a lot of developers come through with smaller and smaller lots and a lot of just high-rise-type living situations. And the most recent townhomes that I've actually seen for sale, signs for sale lately, are Newman's Crossing, Cumberland Point, and Kensington Downs, and all the signs say $300,000 and up. Like, the townhouses are starting at $300,000. And I know that we keep hearing that we need affordable housing, and we do need affordable housing, but it seems the more and more that gets built, the more expensive things are getting, and it's not affordable for people. So as a citizen and a taxpayer, I don't really like the direction of just so much high-density development without any other options. And I think that Gallatin is having growing pains right now, and it's clear with a lot of things that are happening in all of our departments. And I just don't think this is a good idea. And also, just from the article in the newspaper a couple weeks ago, and what was discussed here with you all when you were talking about this study that's being done, to try to figure out how to mitigate the traffic problem that we have on Long Hollow Pike between Greenlee Boulevard and the 109 freeway, because I see that all the time, because that's where I drive. And that is a big problem. And I don't see how adding more high-density to that exact location without figuring out how we're going to deal with the traffic beforehand is smart. I don't think it's a smart thing to do. But so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this public hearing? You may come forward at this time. Seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, I'll declare the public hearing on ordinance 02107-44 closed. Moving on to item number two, which is public hearing on ordinance 02108-48. Councilman Fennell, if you'd introduce this, please.
Yes, this is a public hearing. An ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning approximately 2.74 acres, plus or minus acre parcels from the R-40 low-density residential zoning district to the R-15 medium-density residential zoning district, located east of Airport Road and north of East Broadway Street, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
And I apologize, I should have said Vice Mayor Fennell. My apologies. So this is a public hearing on ordinance 02108-48. If you'd like to speak, you may come forward at this time and do so. Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare public hearing on ordinance 02108-48 closed. And item number three is public hearing on ordinance 02108-50. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for Villas on the Greens, Phase 1 and 2, on a 13.06 plus or minus acre lot located south of Nashville Pike, north of Noah Lane, and west of Plantation Boulevard, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak, you may come forward at this time. Okay, I see no indication that anyone wishes to speak, so I'll declare the public recognition, I'm sorry, the public hearing on ordinance 02108-50 closed. Item number four, Second Reading on Ordinance 02108-49. Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Second Read.
Okay, sorry.
This is a second reading on order number 02108-49, authorizing a mending awarding bid and authorizing fund in the total amount of $2,600,000 for water and sewage reserves for Hartschuk Pike Water Storage Tank, Contract 321, 2021, and I so move.
I have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Van. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is Second Reading on Ordinance 02108-49. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number five is First Reading on Ordinance 02109-51. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriations funds for completion of sidewalk improvements at Panera Bread. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is First Reading on Ordinance 02109-51. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number six is First Reading on Ordinance 02109-52. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes, Mayor. This is ordinance appropriating $173,233 for the purchase of a 2022 roll-off truck for recycling. Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this?
Something we need.
Yes, I will agree with you. First reading on ordinance number 02109-52. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. First reading passes unanimously. Item number seven is First Reading on the Ordinance 02109-53. Councilman Van is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds for 2021-2022 carryover capital projects, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Van, second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any discussion questions? Okay, seeing none. This is First Reading on Ordinance 02109-53. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. First reading passes unanimously. Item number eight is First Reading on the Ordinance 02109-54. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds from business donation. I so move.
I have a motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Alexander. And remember, these are the funds that we're going to be using in codes and engineering provided by Facebook. So this is First Reading on the Ordinance. Any discussion among anyone? Any questions? Okay, this is ordinance 02109-54. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass First Reading unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. I do have one item, and that is the road closure for the Lions Club. I think they're calling it something different now. I read about it. We knew it as the Grand Fondo for years, but now they're calling it the Lions Club Journey for Sight Bike Ride. And it happens on the 18th, and they are asking for a road closure from 6:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. They close that public square, the backside of the L. They don't close, motion to approve. Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, the application is approved. Now I would ask this council, does anyone else have any other business to bring forward tonight? We will then move on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting. You may come forward and speak to anything that's not on the night's agenda. Again, we ask that you give us your name, your address, and you will be limited to five minutes. Public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open.
Good evening. I think I forgot to tell you my name last time. Sorry. Michelle Chivonce, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. So a couple of things. Pascal actually had something that he wanted to bring to your attention, but he was stuck in traffic, and he couldn't get here on time. So I'll just go ahead and let you know what he wanted to talk to you about. But before that, I wanted to just update you about the Harris Lane Long Hollow Pike intersection that we've been talking about for maybe, I don't know, two and a half years now, where the pork chop is right there. And it's still an issue. People are still doing illegal left turns there. I was walking there Saturday, and the pylon's down again. And then also, there's a big crack in the pork chop-like corner, like, all the way through to the ground. So something really big, obviously, hit that. So I know that Vice Mayor, that you had mentioned after, I don't remember if it was, it was earlier this year, when you had agreed that that was an intersection that had issues when you were driving your truck there during the campaign and could barely squeeze through that, right there where the guardrail is, and keeps getting knocked down. So I just wanted to, like, let you know, it's still an issue. So also, the other issue that I wanted to bring to your attention, to hopefully have you discuss, is the recycling center. And this is, I know that Mayor Brown, you got an email from a citizen today. She had actually sent Pascal a Facebook message about the recycling center issues, and apparently had been all over Next Door app as well. And I'll just wait. So anyway, she went back and forth, just giving her concerns, and so Pascal So anyway, she went back and forth just giving her concerns, and so Pascal encouraged her to email you, Mayor. And so she said that she did, and just basically gave a lot of really good solutions, which I think is something good that if, you know, maybe we can open this up to citizens who have solutions to problems. You know, we have this issue there at the recycling center, and I know you've talked before about wanting to limit it to only citizens of Gallatin and ways that we can do that and trying to staff that when I know that, you know, that's going to cost money, and a lot of our Gallatin employees are already underpaid. So it's going to be kind of something that we, how to figure out how to do that. So anyway, I'm just going to, I'll give you the exchange, so you have these good suggestions from the citizen. And then hopefully, that's something that can be addressed very soon. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Seeing no one indicating that they do? Anyone with a motion? Motion to adjourn by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, have a lovely evening. Be safe going home, and thank you for caring about our city and keeping engaged with what's going on. My best.